States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, thank you for having us here. I just asked Dr. Dent if we could sing. This is my vocal persuasion jazz choir, joined by a few more altos and a soprano. There we go. We're gonna sing a piece for you that we sang in the fall, but it's beautiful. It's titled My Romance. And actually, would you raise your hand if you're gonna represent our district at State in April? Raise your hand if you're singing at State. Yeah, we will be representing. Pretty cool. D natural, we have one. I've seen one. As they exit, it's also important to know that it's Music and Education Month. So they're here to... Stacy Scholes, I don't think I saw you stop smiling the entire time, listening to them sing, and that's why we brought them, just to bring a little joy and show what they, their incredible skill. So there you go.
Can I say one quick thing? That was my first dance thirty years ago, almost. So like, I wish it had sounded like that thirty years ago. That was amazing.
Yeah, I'm gonna introduce in just a second. All right, before we get to all the business matters, we had some greeters at the door tonight that we'd love to introduce. If you could come on up front, put you on the spot, which I think, knowing what you do for your school, you're pretty used to. But if you could maybe tell us who you are and something that's special going on at your school this year?
Yeah, my name is Jeremy Estep.
I'm Ella Lamar.
There's a lot of cool things going on at Bonnie Lake, obviously. You probably wanna talk about the dance, so I'll talk about HOSA. I love HOSA. I'm not in HOSA, but our HOSA team just went to state their own like convention situation. I think it was in the Akama. And so we had a whole bunch of people go, like Giugaxiola, Chantel Fozia, Rishi, he's a freshman this year. He's making waves. But our HOSA went and they're super, super involved and they're all, they all showed up and they showed out and they like placed, they, they're doing crazy things. So I'm super, super proud of them. So I just wanna highlight HOSA, cuz I feel like they don't get enough recognition.
Will you tell everybody what HOSA is?
Yeah, HOSAs are like medical, they're a medical club, so they focus on like educating themselves and educating the community about different medical things. I don't know, there's like better words to describe it.
They're head, they wanna head into that career path, correct?
Yeah, so like specifically Giugaxiola, she's a senior this year. She's in HOSA, she's done three hundred service hours at different hospitals in our community. And she, I think she's going into biochem at some prestigious university. She's going places for sure. Oh, and then robotics. Okay, sorry, I'm gonna talk about one more thing. I love Bonnie Lake, sorry. So our robotics team just had their big, fat competition this last weekend. And I went, it was super cool. And they, so like the theme this year was like under the sea. I don't know if you guys went, but it was like under the sea and they had these little robots. And they were like running around picking up these white tubes and putting them on this like coral and throwing balls into the reef. It was so cool. They're all so smart. And like I went into the pits, you have to wear glasses cuz they're all like working with these crazy screwdrivers and things. And they made these robots and they're like fixing them. They're like, why isn't the auto working? I don't know what an auto is. They sound so smart. But our robotics team is doing amazing. They're probably gonna go to Worlds again. I wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah, and I'll talk more about like our day to day. So right now, we're actually in our Spirit Week. We have a dance coming this Saturday. It's our annual spring fling dance. So we have Spirit Week this week and it's mainly centered around March Madness, because that's a huge thing at the school. Everybody loves that. So we've had a Space Jam Day, we've had Extraterrestrial Day, so everybody wore a lot of green on St. Patrick's Day. It was super fun to watch everybody kind of like this mass of green in the commons. It was really like a connecting feeling. And then we have our dance this Saturday. We also are getting started with our budgeting season, so all of our clubs and sports are getting ready for next year. He's super happy about that.
Treasurer, and he would be, right?
He does all the money things. So everybody's just getting really excited about next year and it's just this very like big wave of like excitement, anxiousness of all this like what's coming, what's going on. Our ASB is about to do elections, so there's a lot of people like ready to get involved, ready to get into student government. And just a lot of like really nice feeling throughout the school of like connectedness and excitement.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for being here and greeting everybody. That's amazing. I will give a shout out to the community forum. We just had you two were at a breakout about Build the Hill and you did both did a great job speaking at that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, before we get to the fun stuff, I see some great people in the crowd that we get to talk about tonight, but some business matters really quickly. Approval agenda is recommendation, the administration recommends that the Board of Directors approve the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Tom. Second.
Second.
Awesome. Any discussion? Usually not. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, second business matter we need to get out of the way, consent items. The administration recommends that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda items for the March nineteenth board meeting, as you've seen in your packet. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? I noticed some bus driver hires in there. That's pretty awesome. All right, has seen no other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, here's the fun part.
We have some state champions in the house tonight. We are so fortunate tonight to have our Spanther basketball team, state champions, in, in the boardroom tonight to recognize and celebrate with them. This is their second year in a row of being state champions. I'm not, well, I heard that we might be going for a three-peat. Like, but you know, I don't wanna jinx anything, so, so I'm gonna invite our, did Gail come? Is she, didn't see her? So I'm gonna invite our three coaches to come on up. They're gonna talk a little bit about the program and then introduce the players.
Hi, my name is Coach Bailey, Lacy Bailey. I've been coaching for the Spanthers for four years now. It's one of my favorite activities. We have a really great group of kids with us this season that have continued with us for the last two seasons. We've become quite a little family. We have a skills, individual skills team as well, and we have some athletes from our individual skills here with us tonight. And I'll let the other coaches introduce before we talk about all the fun stuff.
Let Kathy go and talk about her skills first.
I'm Kathy Arnold and I'm the coach for individual skills, and I've been doing this for about eighteen years now. So I've seen a lot. We have, we definitely have been state champions more than twice. We've also done it more than twice in a row before in the past over my years that I've been here, and I will hand it over to Darcy, and then we'll talk about our athletes.
I'm Darcy Boyer. This is my second year with the program. Last year I volunteered and then this year is my first year assistant coach. Super fun to be around the kids. It's my second year up at the high school as well, so it's just super fun. And a lot of our kids that we see day in and day out are up at our school, so it's even more beneficial and fun to see the kids compete and get to work with them day in and day out. And then we'll, yeah, talk about.
Sure. So this season, we held two Pack the Gyms, one at Bonnie Lake High School against Auburn High School, their unified team. And we went and won that game. And then we had Pack the Gym at Sumner High School, which is always a really fun, big event. We played an inner squad scrimmage, but it was really fun to watch the kids compete against each other that night as well. We went and played regionals out in Lakewood. We went undefeated against the Vancouver Terriers, which our kids fought tooth and nail to beat them in the finals last year, so it was a really great opening to our season over at regionals in Lakewood. We ended up going undefeated in regionals and moved on to state in Wenatchee, where we played six games in a matter of two days. And they went undefeated, all six games. Yeah. We had a team of ten athletes and they just showed the definition of sportsmanship, perseverance. They worked together as a team. They communicated really well. And this, this program wouldn't be what it is without the dedication of these kids to not only each other, but the sport. And it's really fulfilling as a coach to watch them all continue to grow and learn every season. And it's just a really, really awesome program that I'm so proud to be a part of. If we want to invite kids up, yeah. Okay, so we have Isaiah Manning. He's part of the Spanthers team. Isaiah was part of the state championship last year. We have Molly McCann. Both Sumner High School athletes as well. And we have Jackson Turner. Connor Beagle. In his fancy Letterman jacket. Rocky Davison. Rocky is new to the season, to this team this year, but was a very important part of our team this year. We have Kieran Harmon. Kieran was part of the individual skills competition in Wenatchee. She's a freshman and made it to state her first year. And not only that, but she took gold. Amazing. And then we have Philip Morton. Philip's with us today. Talking about growth of the athletes, Philip was on skills last year, went to state. What did you place last year in state? Do you remember? Does mom remember? First, first, first in skills. And he graduated or moved up to team this year and what did really great went with us to state. So we have more athletes that weren't able to be here tonight and we're bummed that they couldn't experience this joy with us. But we all worked together to make this happen and we're super proud of them.
So on the individual skills, I had sixteen athletes, five of them made it to state and three of them participated in state. And Kieran had taken gold. Drake, second year to go to state in a row, he took silver and then Leland took fourth place in state.
No, it's okay.
It's a school night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We lost all our fans. Well, that was, that was pretty amazing. Of course, we just lost two-thirds of fans in the room, but you know. No, that's okay. They did, like Dr. Dent said, it is a school night, so we'll, we'll let them go while we do the rest of the business, which brings us on the agenda to superintendent comments.
I just, I just wanna say how proud I am to work and serve in a district that recognizes every, every kid. Music and education, our Spanther basketball team, all kids are visible in this school district and it's just, it's an honor to serve and work in this, in this type of environment. So that's all I got.
All right, that was quick and easy. All right, board member comments. Tom, you wanna go first?
Sure.
Our newest member.
It's, it's been an exciting month and busy month. I've learned so much in the last two weeks. You know, all the things that we did in our school district, so much going on behind the scenes and wasn't aware of it. And most of the things I went to, all of you were there too, but you know, there's some real highlights I did going to Emerald Hills PTA. Dr. Dent went with me there and enjoy hearing what they had going on up there. It's so exciting and a lot of people there. It was great. I also did a unique experience. I went on a school bus ride. So went to the high school and went to lower grades. And of course, that day was the emergency exit. So, so I got on the back of the bus and survived, got back on. I also found out that the lower grades have assigned seats. The seat I was in, I also looked up, there's a child standing next to me and Dennis says, you need to move your, move Tom. He sits there. So learned lots of things that way. It was great how we keep track of all the students coming and going off the buses too. I didn't realize we had all that technology in the buses too. It was really spectacular. I know the STEM fair is not new to any of you and you all were, most of you were there. I've heard about the STEM, STEM fair, between going to CFF, community families so much. But I've never been to one of your, our events and so many kids were involved, so much going on there. I was just, when I walked in the upstairs, looked down, wow, and there's, it was remarkable. And I went down to robotics, spent quite a bit of time down there with the teacher and all the students and they're all engaged in getting things done down there for their contests they have that, during the last weekend. And the other thing that, again, most of you were there, the All-Star Choir, the All-District Choir Festival, that was beautiful. You know, there's so many kids there. We had standing room only. Dr. Dent, yes, we, not enough room for everybody. It was just, and the children here tonight was, it really was good and so many outstanding people there. And I think I attended about nine events last night, so I took last weekend off. I was getting tired. I've enjoyed it so much, but glad to be here.
Awesome. Thank you. JV, you wanna go next?
Sure. All right, I was told I have to put this closer, so I'm listening, trying to. One of the things, we talked a lot about how wonderful the Spanthers were. I also wanna recognize how wonderful their coaches are. I mean, how lucky are we to have? And I, I thought that from the minute I sat here in the board, how lucky we are to have just the community and the adults that really put the attention into our kids and, you know, and, and it shows. I mean, look at the little champions that we've got and repeating and, and you know, coming in. So I just wanna shout out to the coaches, cuz that's, something's pretty special. One of the other things that, and Tom was there, but we had the, as were some of the other board members, but we had the pleasure of going to Bonnie Lake Elementary and meeting. It was a great, it was a great experience because we get to, to actually engage with teachers and with the kids out on the playground and during lunch. And we had assignments. It was kinda nerve wracking. We had to go and ask them questions about, you know, how they, how they felt about their school and whether or not they knew some of the mottos that their school was talking about, trying to teach. And I did learn that, you know, one of the students was very afraid of a giant meteor attack, so you know, I, we'll be talking about that and safety, you know, how we, we're gonna prepare for that. But it was, one of the things that I really took away was how, again, how engaged everybody there was in making sure that all the kids are feeling safe and secure and how it's a part of their everyday routine to be talking about that. And I think the one thing that stuck out the most was when the principal said, we know and can account for every single student on this campus from the time they step in on campus to the time they leave. There's not, there's not one kid that we don't know what bus they got on, when they got on, or who they went home with. And I thought, wow, cuz I've been to drop offs and pickups and it feels like chaos, but I guess it's really organized chaos. So that was really wonderful. And I'm sad I missed out on the robotics and I'm sad I missed out on the STEM cell cuz I was STEM fair, but I was out of town, so I'll have to catch them next year.
Awesome. Thank you. Billy, you wanna go next? Or Erin, sorry?
I think I won't, I won't go on too much because there, you could go on forever, really, with all the amazing things that are happening. I think I did, I went to the Outsiders play and the STEM fair is always on my birthday. And so we always plan our activities around the STEM fair every year. That's always part of our day. So Zoe got to come with me to it this year. And it's just, I think, you know, you kinda said it already, but Lori, that this district just does an amazing job of celebrating all kids. From children who sing, which if you wanna see me cry, put people, put kids in front of me singing. It gets me every time. It doesn't matter if they're five or they're eighteen. There's something about music that just like, ugh, makes me moved. And so we celebrate that. We celebrate robotics. We celebrate art. We're celebrating kids for who they are and what they're able to achieve. And then we have these amazing adults who are prompting them forward in what their talents are. And it's a beautiful thing to watch. The other thing that I wanted to highlight really quickly was the Community Summit. And again, I say quickly, but it deserves so much more time because Mary Lee and company, you do an amazing job day in, day out of finding community partners with the sole purpose of coming together and helping our kids. And what greater gift is that? I mean, I just don't know if there's any more noble of a job than to find resources to help kids succeed. And to be a part of that community event and see all the people in our community. So many of you were there in the evening, giving up your time just to be there in support of kids and these organizations who support them day in, day out. And it was a beautiful thing to be a part of. And I look forward to that every year too. It's truly community. Yeah, community. That's all I have.
You know, we had the visit out to Pierce County Skill Center recently with some parent leaders. Mary Lee was there, Lori was there. And the director is, is an amazing gentleman to listen to. And I was talking to my third grade grandson that kind of brought everything together for me. One of the things we talked about is college and career readiness. Now, for some of us, we took a lot of classes. We weren't sure why. They gave us a test in our junior year, brought you in and said, you are gonna be a nurse or a forest ranger. That was all the choices we had. Not sure how we got there. I think they just had a shortage of one or the other and directed us that way. But when I look at the programs and how they've grown over the years from joining the district to now, you know, our kids are working from elementary school, middle school, high school, and then beyond, in a world where we know they're gonna be changing jobs readily. We know that careers are gonna go away before, before people finish their, their work lives and that. But what I see is kids that are learning how to learn, how to apply what they're learning. They're getting hooked in third grade in their robotics classes and the things that they're doing in their STEM classes and that. And that's progressing all the way up. And I know that as a building leader at the high school level, my job was never to tell a student what they're going to do. It was to prepare them so they could do anything they wanted to. And that has now, as I said, started actually in the elementary schools and it's working its way up all the way through to the experiences our high school kids and beyond have. And it's, it's just amazing to see how that has, has transpired over the many years. And that program, Pierce County Skill Center, is, is truly amazing and it's so fortunate that we're partners with that. So that's what I wanted to share.
Awesome. I'm, I'm always actually impressed with everything going on, how we somehow manage to each talk about things in a differently, so we don't step over or repeat everything. But when you go last, that tends to happen. So I will try to repeat everything, but you know, some of the things that I also attended that everybody's talked about, the STEM fair. One thing that jumped out at me about the STEM fair was all of the art, all the way down to the elementary level that was on display. You know, they can't display every art piece from every student, so they, I was really impressed with how the staff figured out how to do group projects that each student could contribute to and then put the entire group project on display. And then the student could bring their parents, say, I did that portion of it instead of, oh, well, my art didn't make it. And I really was impressed by how inclusive that was to make every student feel like they had something to show their parents when they were there. So that was something that jumped out at me. The Pierce County Schools Skill Center was amazing. It's actually, you know, one of those things that not everybody in our district even knows about yet. And we, we definitely want them to know about it because it's a great place to learn everything from being a vet tech to carpentry skills, to auto mechanics, to an area that I didn't actually know existed called mechatronics? Yeah, I didn't know what mechatronics was until I went and took the tour, which for those that don't know, it's, it's robotics, it's pneumatics, it's metalworking, it's bringing everything together. For instance, if you walked into an Amazon warehouse and you saw all the robots and the conveyor belts and the arms pushing packages after they read barcodes, all of those things are built and designed by, you know, people who have that skill set. And so I even learned something new going on that tour. The Bonnie Lake Elementary visit was great. It, it really showed the importance that, the thing that our district does, which is survey students. And Bonnie Lake Elementary, in their survey results, realized there were some shortfalls in students understanding what safety meant and the things that they need to do to be part of that safety culture. And so they recognized that and they took action. And they got to show off the results when we showed up and they gave us clipboards and we got to go out in recess and, and ask the students, you know, what they knew about, you know, this area of everything. And we got some interesting, you know, answers about the threat of meteors and things like that. But more importantly, they, they actually knew exactly what it was that the, the staff wanted to know. In fact, I even spoke to one student and later was told that he'd only been in the building for a week as a new student. He already knew everything. So they took survey results and they made a quick turnaround, which I think speaks to the strength of the district. And the Community Summit, amazing. You don't get to make it to every breakout, but I made it to the Bonnie Lake Build the Hill breakout, so it was great. They had city council members there. It just had the ASB students there to really talk about how they're building. It just had the A S B students there to really talk about how they're building that camaraderie on the hill with Bonnie Lake High School and everything. So yeah, lots going on, some really good stuff. Was, was exciting. All right, that brings us in the agenda to audience comments.
Good evening. The Board recognizes the value of public comment on education issues and the importance of involving members of the public in its meetings. Comments from the public are taken under Board advisement and may or may not receive action at a future meeting. Topics including charges or complaints against employees, employment, or dismissal of personnel, acquisition of real estate, lawyer-client relationships, campaigning, and parameters for negotiations should not be discussed in audience comments. Other information, questions, or problems can usually be addressed by district staff. The audience comment period will end when all registered speakers have been heard and we ask that you please adhere and understand the following guidelines. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the School Board requests no clapping, booing, or any other form of support or non-support be used. The Board will not respond to comments, but will take them under advisement. Speakers should be courteous and professional, refrain from using profanity, vulgar language, threatening or defamatory comments. As a reminder, individuals are not permitted to name a specific staff member, board member, or student during public comments. Failure to do so may result in the Board President or designee interrupting or ending the comment. Remember, your words have impact and you, not the school district, are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it is possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you're unsure of the legal effect of your remarks, you may seek independent legal advice. In any case, we ask that you help us model for our students what respect and inclusivity in our community look and sound like. Speakers who registered by noon yesterday will be heard. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name. Address your comments to the School Board as a whole. You will have three minutes to speak and may not cede or give your time to another speaker. I will signal you with the bell when one minute remains and you can see the clock up here. Our first audience comment for this evening is Dana Sprouse. Dana Sprouse? Okay. Our next audience comment is Elizabeth Kleingartner.
Thank you. Is that working? Okay. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today about an organization that has a profound impact on students. F C C L A, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. More than just a club, F C C L A is a platform where students learn critical life skills, leadership, and career readiness. Through competitive events, students can showcase their talents and interests while fostering teamwork and developing problem-solving and public speaking skills. Whether it's organizing community projects like blood drives and literacy night or imagining solutions to real-world challenges like sustainability and financial fitness, to creating professional websites or innovative lesson plans for elementary education or even learning parliamentary law, students can find a way to compete in nearly any topic they are passionate about. In recent years, Sumner High School's chapter has greatly expanded to 45 active members. This year, it's largest ever. Two weeks ago, my husband and I chaperoned many of these outstanding young people at the state competition. Sumner received 13 golds and 13 silvers, so all 26 students qualified to go to the national competition this summer. This is a remarkable achievement that is entirely due to the dedication of the advisors. As an evaluator, I have come to appreciate the stringent requirements of the rubric for these events. I have also personally observed the extensive time advisors dedicate to each student, ensuring that projects comply with all guidelines, listening to their oral presentations, and providing constructive feedback. We even had a student get 100, a perfect score, which is a very rare occurrence. I wish I could mention names as the Sumner High School advisors deserve accolades for the many, many hours they put in after school. Bonnie Lake's advisors show a similar level of dedication to their students and performed well at state also. The advisors worked tirelessly planning an impressive range of fundraising efforts, even working evening and weekend sports concessions alongside their students. The school district has previously provided a stipend per student to go to nationals. But with 26 students qualifying and it being held in Orlando, there is a greater need for financial assistance this year. I am requesting consideration for additional funding so that all these students have an opportunity to participate. I believe that F C C L A deserves continued support and recognition because it transforms the lives of its members as they engage with the community. By investing in F C C L A, you are investing in the leaders of tomorrow and ensuring the continued growth of this program.
Thank you. That ends our audience comments for this evening.
It's amazing how quickly three minutes goes, doesn't it? All right. So that brings us into business matters. Budget update. Chief Financial Officer Brian is presenting a budget update to the Board.
Stand close, raise this.
This is Brian's, well, is this your real first board presentation?
This is my first official board presentation.
Oh, boy.
I know.
Excited for you. I'm really excited.
In this district, right?
In this district, yes.
Yes, in this, yeah, I've done it a few times.
Just a few, right?
Yeah. President Lewis, Vice President Gaines, Superintendent Dent, and the rest of the distinguished members of the Boards, my pleasure to give a short budget update. See if I can get the clicker to work, right? Some important sta, oh, by the way, don't be afraid to interrupt me during this and ask questions. We can drill down, just have a conversation rather than wait until the end. It's usually easier and better just to do it during the presentation. Some important statewide dates, the legislative, I'm not going to read this all to you, but the legislative session did begin and that's where we're kind of in the middle of it. So yesterday, the 18th of March was actually kind of a significant day. And last week, when I made this board presentation, I wasn't sure exactly what was going to happen yesterday. I have some updates for you. So the Washington State Economic Revenue and Forecast Council released their update, which they're required to do on odd budget years, so 2025 is odd one, by March 20th because it's a long budget session. And they do that for the state legislature and the governor. They're kind of giving the updated revenue forecast for the state for the next two and four years technically. But they're really focused on the biannual. And the last time they did the update was in November of 2024. And that's what former Governor Emsley used to build the initial budget they gave the state legislature they started to work on. So this new update, here's some of the key takeaways. It wasn't significantly different. However, revenue is now... There's no sound. Okay. I'll speak up a little bit, I'm sorry. Revenue is forecast for the next biannual to be down from the November forecast by just under $500 million, about a half billion dollars. But I want to put that in perspective of the state budget, you know, the revenue they have for the two-year budget, biannual is what they call it. They expected in November to have $71.4 million. Now the expectation is 70.95 billion. So as you see, it's down $479 million technically. But another way of looking at it, it's seven tenths of one percent. So it's not a huge change, but it is real money down. And I'll get more into that when I get to future slides, when we talk about proposals that are in the state legislature right now on the impact of that. But then the legislative session hopefully will end on April 27th. That's the date it's planned to end, but if they haven't reached, you know, budget agreements by then, it could be extended in a special session and that has happened before. But right now, the idea is it'll end April 27th and we'll have a good idea of what the revenue will be for all the state agencies that get money and all the school districts in the state. However, there's often language that's not exactly clear when the budget's finalized, that final day. And sometimes there's rulemaking by the O S P I or different state agencies. And sometimes there's implementation language and guidance they have to give. So sometimes it's not until a couple of weeks into May until you really know on the long budget session what your revenues are going to be. Other important state dates. We have to submit a budget to the local E S D by the 10th of July. That budget can be revised still after that date. We have to submit something on a certain form called the F-195 to them. And then you, the Board, has to adopt the budget by the 31st of August. So those are the required kind of dates. This, I know it's way too small and we're not going to spend a ton of time here because you do have an attachment to the electronic board agenda, a PDF of the board calendar. But I just want to give you a little bit of update. We have done or completed one through five and seven and eight. So we met with, I'm not going to read all, we met with different school staff. We're meeting with other staff. We sent forms to A S B. They mentioned they have to build their A S B budgets here earlier. Those forms are out there. Tonight's the board meeting and then, as you can see, there's still a lot to do going forward. I'm not going to cover all of this. Okay. We get most of the money from our students from the state. Remember, about 75% of money, of our money comes from the state and over 70% of that comes from the prototypical funding model. And that is determined by your average annual full-time enrollment. So some of you who've been on the Board a long time will know this. You do an enrollment report once a month and then at the end of the year, they take an average of that and that's what you truly get funded on the year. You do adjustment every month and then at the final, at the end of the year, they do a final adjustment and that determines how much money the state gives you through the prototypical model. This is pretty typical of Washington School District. September is usually the lowest month. It goes up, November and December tend to be the highest. There are individual years that are different than that, but that's the trend we're seeing again this year and that's kind of the typical trend. Any questions here? Okay. So what have we done for projecting enrollment? The first two columns are the, the last two completed years and the actual average annual F T E for the district. And you can see the different color categories, elementary, middle, and high school. And then as of January of this year, again, we don't, we get funded on the final at the end of the year, but this kind of give you where we're headed now is just over 10,000 and we're projecting 10,050 for next year. So what we're seeing is pretty stable growth. And we used what was, what's called a cohort advancement, historical cohort advancement method. We look at what percentage of third graders become fourth graders historically and fourth become fifth. And we kind of do a couple of methods. We use an average over the last 10 years and then we do a modified average where we look at the more, put more weight, weighted average on the more recent years. And we also use demographer studies. We can kind of compare them all to three and we kind of come to the middle ground of all those and that's the numbers. Questions? Okay.
I have one question, just mostly, I guess I would have expected it to be more even. Like so, like middle school seems like the small, it just, maybe that's the way is like the smallest cohort and it's in the middle. And I would have just thought that it, I don't know, either would have gotten smaller as it got bigger or like, like I guess I'm just curious why middle school looks like it's the smallest cohort.
It's only got three grades is kind of the reason. So it's the total number of students. So element, no, it's good, a great question though.
Thank you.
You're never really sure, you know, what's clear and what's not, but elementary's K through five.
No, I, yeah. Obvious, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. But along those lines, we're seeing a bubble go into our middle schools now because they had bigger class sizes from the elementary that are now going to middle schools and we've had smaller recent kindergarten classes that are now moving up. So there is a bubble kind of moving through. You're welcome. There, that's not a dumb question. No, not at all. Okay. I have some updates here. Again, this was submitted a week ago. There is a lot that's changed in a week. I hate to go in too much detail here because they change all the time. The bills are constantly being gutted and they go to different committees and they get amended and things get taken out and put in. But as of last week, there were four bills alive as part of the big three. So the advocacy groups in the state of Washington, W A S A, W A S B O, W A S D A, all the ones were pushing big three, things that needed funding that aren't, are not adequately funded and kind of have been falling behind. So the big three were M S O Cs, material supplies and operating costs, special education, and then transportation. Well, as of last week, all the transportation bills were dead and there's no real talk that they're going to be revived because it's possible to revive the bills as they, you know, go from House to Senate, Senate to House with their bills or they just have the budget discussions. But those are probably dead, dead. The two House bills I have up here, the one for basic education, M S O Cs, and special education have since died since last week. Those are two dead. The only two bills alive are Senate Bill 5192 and Senate Bill 5263. It's possible some components of the House bills will be reintroduced. Like after the House passes it, it has to be sent to the Senate. They have to pass the same bills that then get sent to the governor. But I have some details on these really quick highlights. Let's go. Senate Bill 5192, it's a shell of its original bill. It originally was an ask of almost $300 million. Its current language as amended has it been about $160 million. That's still a lot of money from the state, but not nearly what was asked and the need and divide by the 295 districts, it's not as much. It would increase the allocations by $77.49 per student on an annual basis. And it required to be used on M S O Cs. The prototypical allocation model historically has, the language specifically says, this is an allocation-only model. The district gets to decide, you know, how to use the money. That's been changing in recent years as the legislature's given more money. They've said, no, you have to spend this money specifically on that with enhancements we've seen recently. So you see that trend continuing here. They did, this bill currently, and I shouldn't say currently because it's always changing, has a smoothing mechanisms where they will average your district's enrollment over the last three years, not just look at the current year on the, so, but if you're a growing district, it'll give you less money over that time period. If you're a declining district, you actually get more money as you just think about it logically. Yes, exactly. Yes, I did. It has a, a section that would require them to use the state's I P D inflation, I P D, which... Implicit Price Deflator, yes. Use the official implicit, implicit price deflator. Instead of a number the state legislature comes up with every session because in recent years where I P D was like 3.5% and that's what they gave to the prototypical model section that's tied to salaries, to the M S O C section, they gave 1.9% increase. So this would require them to at least give the same I P D they gave to the salary section of the prototypical model. But again, a lot less than it originally was and it might see changes. Let's talk about Senate Bill 5263. It's also been drastically reduced. The original bill was a huge ask though and probably nobody thought it was really going to happen at that. It was a $1.65 billion ask over the next two years. And the current language is still significant. It's sitting at about $554 million that it would cost the state to implement it. It would eliminate the 16% cap on special education funding. So currently, if you have more than 16% of your students who are special education students, you get capped at that percentage. It wouldn't matter us, matter to us because we're at about 13%. So we're not at the cap, but for districts above the cap, there would no longer be a cap. The big increase is what's the tier one and tier two multiplier is what they call it in the, in the funding model. And basically it's a 20% increase. It would, it would merge the two tiers. One tier is 1.6 currently, the other tier is 1.12. It would merge them to no longer be two tiers of students, be just special ed student or not. And the multiplier to become one point is, keeps changing all the time. Currently 1.32 is the current language. And that is about a 20% increase in special education funding for us if it's left like it is right now. Okay. A little bit more about the state legislature. So the funding, the update in the, in the expected or forecasted, we can't really say, you can't forecast for two to four years. I mean, it's almost impossible. But as far as all the assumptions they put in, even before that happened, the state legislature believed they were facing a significant deficit. In former Governor Emsley budget proposal he made... In former Governor Emsley budget proposal he made, he said that there is a sixteen billion dollar deficit over the next two years. New Governor Ferguson updated that, says there's a fifteen billion dollar deficit over those two years. The, I'm gonna make sure I get the right group here. The House Democratic Caucus says there's a twelve billion dollar deficit over the next two years. And the Office of Program Research, which is a um legislative, it's an arm of the legislative branch that for their staff that do analysis, says there's a six point seven billion dollar deficit over the next two years. I know. It it depends on what assumptions you put in, but what is clear is there is an actual deficit the state is facing. They cannot keep increasing expenditures at the rate they have been the last few years. Because revenue projections are still going up, but they're much slower than they had been. About three years ago, you had double-digit revenue gains coming out of COVID. And part of that was because they're getting stimulus money. The economy roared back much faster than everybody thought. But since then, it's really dropped off, and actually, two years ago, there was a slight decline in state revenue. This year, it's back up again. But we're talking in the two to three percent range of growth and state expenditures. Once they saw those double-digit gains, they started spending at you know, nine, ten percent more per year, and they can't keep doing that, but they've got some of that built in that they have to really slow down. Okay. Little bit of update, because we I, we were asked a question about um federal revenue, and there's some concern about federal revenue. This is last year, how much we got in 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 our different revenue sources from, you know, from the state, federal and local. And you can see, it was a little over seven million dollars, which was four percent. And if you dive down a little bit deeper, this is that seven point four million dollars of the just federal revenue and where it comes from. Thirty percent special education, um little bit less than twenty percent per title, a little bit less than forty percent for food services. And if you look back over the last eight years, it's varied on the low at three point eight percent from the federal government to about seven percent. Three point eight percent was the year before we got any COVID funding. So that was in eighteen nineteen, where we got no federal stimulus money, and then twenty-two twenty on, either twenty-one twenty-two or twenty-two twenty-three, we got about seven percent of our money from um the federal government. That's when we got a lot of the Esser money and spent a lot of it in that year. Yes.
What is E S S? E S S E R?
Esser.
Yes, sir.
That was the federal stimulus money related to COVID. When the federal government passed the huge stimulus bills, the money that came to schools is abbreviated Esser. Every student succeeds. Yeah, yes, one-time money. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions that they didn't get answered during the presentation? Yeah, hopefully they uh, hopefully they can keep things moving in the right direction and they, I I'm happy to see the increase in percentage on the special education. That's much needed.
Again, it's just a bill only in the senate right now. The House has to agree to it, and then the governor has to sign it, and who knows, but right now it's looking like it could be some extra money. So thank you.
Yeah, great presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, so that brings us to some information only. Um, budget status report, uh January financial report is in your packet. Uh, budget calendar uh also has been updated in your packet for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget calendar. And that brings us to some action items with policy. So in accordance with policy thirteen-ten, adoption amendment of policies and bylaws, the following policies have been included for second reading and adoption. The district administration right commends the board adopt the following district policies in accordance with policy thirteen-ten. Policies included are two zero two-two electronics resources, internet safety, two zero two-three digital citizenship and media literacy, five four zero zero personnel leaves, six five zero one data privacy. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Thank you, so moved, thank you. Have a day.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Second, are any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes. All right, there is, for your information only, a child nutrition report put together by a director of child nutrition uh has prepared the written port and updated the board. Uh, it is in your packet under child nutrition department update. That brings us to board discussion. Is there any open board discussion we need tonight? No? All right, well, Aaron, did you have something?
I was thinking after our um study session, when you, Kelly mentioned that there was a map that you can go on and see the percentage of federal funds. I was playing around with that and um it's amazing how, I mean, we're, you know, we're at what, four percentish? There's some districts in the thirties, forties percent um of federal, federal funds and um I just can't stop thinking about that right now and what that might mean for kids. Um, and so I'm gonna be very curious to see um tomorrow, moving forward, what um some of these decisions that are on the federal level will mean for our district and other districts surrounding us. It's not really discussion, just more of a pondering.
Yeah, especially not just funding, but how it relates to five, five oh four plans, things like that, that um, you know, our, our federal department of education is where that comes from, and that direction comes all the way down to us, and it would be, you know, be disappointing to see some of those students be left behind when they need extra help, so. Anything else?
A little bit frustrating to, to see that we might make some progress in special education at the state level, just to have to take steps back if it's the federal funding goes away, since that's a significant part of special ed. Um, the only other thing I wanted to say is, uh, I know there's, this, this came up, and Dr. Dent actually gave us a heads up on it, but I know it's maybe people have heard it, um, that there's been a lot of talk about school lunches and and school districts without um maybe significant or, or even just adequate time to have lunch. And uh, Dr. Dent was uh quick to let us all know and remind us that all of our schools have at least thirty minutes for their students to have lunch. So since that's something that's out there, I thought I would just let everybody know that that we always have, and sounds like we'll continue that, so.
Definitely, definitely. Anything else?
Lunchrooms are distracting places. I mean, my goodness, there's so much going on, and you gotta talk to your friends.
Yeah.
But thirty minutes is a good check.
Okay, all right, that brings us to the end of the meeting. Announcement of our next regular board meeting has been scheduled for Wednesday, April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. We'll begin at six PM in the central boardroom office right here. We are adjourned. Thank you.